Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. It is December 7th, 2021. I'm Norma Martinez Rubin, and I'm here as the mayor of Pinole, and I am calling to order the regular meeting of Pinole City Council. Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of the U.S. military troops? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloney people, who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloneyland, the land that Pinole sits upon, their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Martinez Rubin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Here.
Councilmember Tave?
Here.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Toms?
Here.
City Manager Marie?
Here.
City Attorney Kasher?
Here.
Assistant City Manager De La Rosa?
Here.
Mayor and council, the agenda was posted on Thursday, December 2nd, at 4:00 p.m. with all legally required notices. No written comments were received in advance of the meeting. Does the council have any conflicts to report this evening? That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do not have a closed session this evening. We come to the point of the agenda where it is available for public comment by our residents and others. And if you are joining us via Zoom, the webinar ID is on the screen, 893-3500-0272, and by phone, 1669-900-6833. If you are using the Mute His Hand feature, and if by phone, press *9 to alert staff that you'd like to comment, and press *6 to unmute once called upon. So during this portion of the agenda, citizens to be heard, citizens may speak under any item not listed on the agenda. The time limit is three minutes and is subject to modification. By me, your mayor, individuals may not share or offer time to another speaker. Pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act, no action may be taken on a matter unless it is listed on the agenda or unless certain emergency or special circumstances exist. The city council may direct staff to investigate and/or schedule certain matters for consideration at a future council meeting. Madam City Clerk or Deputy City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Yes, good evening, mayor. We do have several. We'll start with Cordell Hindler.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, so, good evening, Mayor Rubin, Councilmember Rubin. My name is Cordell Hindler, and I'm a Richmond resident. So, and I have some Christmas gifts to share with you all. So, actually, they're future agenda requests. So, number one is to have the council consider inviting Ken Kirby to come to a future meeting regarding the housing element, because when I attended the mayor's conference about a month or so ago, I was inspired by his presentation and the data that was collected. So that's one. And then, number two, if you recall at the last meeting, I wanted to speak on the budget item regarding the positions and that type of thing. So hopefully that at some point that can be re-agendized for the next meeting. And let's see, what else? Oh, and I do apologize for missing the tree lighting ceremony. It was, I had another engagement to attend to that evening. So all in all, hopefully that we'll do it again next year in person, because that way I can see the council and that type of thing. So I'm not going to use my time. I'll just save my comments for when we get done with the consent calendar and the reorganization plan. So that's it.
Rafael Minas?
Greetings, Mayor Martinez Rubin, council staff, and members of the public. Most of the items that I want to talk about today are probably going to fall properly under later agenda items, so I won't speak on them now. But I think it's reasonable to talk about the overall progress of our anti-coronavirus measures in the county at this point. So right now, according to the county's overview website, Pinole has had 16 cases in the last 14 days, which is a decrease from the value that we had at the last meeting. And in directly related news, we are at 89.1% of our entire population, five and older, being at least partially vaccinated, and 82.9% being fully vaccinated. I note that, seeing as I personally just went through this process yesterday, but if you got your vaccine six months ago or earlier, you should consider getting a booster shot. It's been formally recommended by the FDA and the CDC. And while it may not be perfectly protective versus the new Omicron variant, it will still help to booster overall immunity versus Omicron and Delta. And Delta is still the predominant variant in this region. And I believe that's all my comments versus... Oh, wait, no. I have one more comment. I'd like to thank Christie Lam Julian for her work in getting the various Christmas trees from several schools together for the tree lighting ceremony. I was only able to be there for part of it because I had work on that day. But I enjoyed getting to see all the trees. It was nicely done, and I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all.
We have a telephone caller, last four numbers, 5748. Can you please press *6 to unmute yourself? Telephone caller with the last four numbers, 5748, are you able to press *6 to unmute yourself?
Hello?
Hello? We can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, can you please identify yourself?
My name's Anthony James, and I'm a longtime resident of Pinole, over 40 going on 50 years. And I'm calling on behalf of my neighbors and friends. And I have a few issues to address to the city council and the staff and Mayor Rubin, and congratulations to Mayor Protem. And I hope you have your pencil and pad out, because some of these might sound redundant, but they've never been really addressed or resolved by the city. First of all, before going forward, I noticed that Caltrans has a scheduled meeting coming up. It would be nice if they could schedule a meeting with open public, either in closed chambers or on Zoom or something within the next month or two, to give the community a chance to voice their direct opinions to Caltrans and what kind of jobs they're doing and not doing. And so we know firsthand what's going on with Caltrans. Specifically, the overhead lights on the freeway over underpass are still out, and they've been out for several years now. And it's been brought up to the city and Caltrans, but no one can seem to go up there and change the light bulb on the I-80 Oakland West sign and the I-80 Sacramento East sign above the major freeway thoroughfare going up and down Pinole Valley Road between Jack in the Box and the Holden Alley. Those lights have been off forever. It's like none of you drive through town or notice anything at night. Secondly, I'd like to ask Caltrans if they would consider a joint effort with the city to widen that on-ramp after Jack in the Box to make it to two full lanes rather than, or three lanes, to alleviate the traffic and the backup going up Pinole Valley Road in the mornings and afternoons and middle of the day. And that would involve taking some property out from that corner just past Jack in the Box and getting a joint effort with Caltrans and some funding from the state or federal government and that of Pinole to widen that lane for the community and public. And then also, the other issue I wanted to address was the situation on Adobe Road. What's the current status with the caretaker's house? It's been vacant for over six to nine months now. And also, that port needs to be cleaned up adjoining it, that old port, the barbecue park road that has old downed trees and rubbish and piles of mounds of wood chips that were illegally dumped there by the person at 1260.
Next, we have Lisa Strong.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I do not live in Pinole. I live in San Francisco. But I'm a big supporter of Mr. Murphy, and I just want to say congratulations, and you're amazing.
Debbie?
Good evening. I just wanted to remind everyone that today, being December 7th, is the day Pearl Harbor was bombed and our country sacrificed so many of our military personnel. And I would ask that at the end of tonight's meeting that there will be an acknowledgement of such and perhaps a moment of silence in honor of those that died. I will not comment tonight on Councilman Murphy's refusal to stand for the flag other than to say it is ironic that today, a day in infamy, that he is sworn in as Mayor Protem. I hope he will take some time to reflect on this during this day as well as other days. And since I may not be here for the rest of the meeting, I would like to congratulate our Mayor Protem Vincent Salimi on his new position as mayor once he is sworn in. I look forward to a year with him at the helm. Thank you.
Alfred Tui?
Hello, thank you. I'm calling just to congratulate Mr. Murphy for all his work today at the city. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm just coming through to make sure there are no more virtual hands.
Yes, thank you. And if there is anyone listening to us, the comments now are for items not on the agenda. And there will be time to speak to the incoming, the council members who will be sworn in in different roles this evening, later on on the agenda if you wish to comment or give your regards. Congratulatory notes about that later today.
Mayor, there is one more. Nicole Bolden?
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm not in the area, I'm actually not in the state, but I wanted to come in today and congratulate Mr. Murphy on his impending role. And that was it. Just congratulations, Mr. Murphy, and I hope that you'll have great luck in your role.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. So thank you all for your comments or input. I want to turn to staff about a couple of these items that were mentioned by one of the speakers, and if you would just kindly make a note. And perhaps at some point, I'll bring this up, perhaps as an agenda item request later during the meeting, about the roles of Caltrans in the city. The speaker mentioned a meeting coming up. I think the particulars about that meeting have to do specifically with Caltrans and their role in helping maintain the ramps, on-ramps and off-ramps, clean or cleaner than they usually are. The larger matters of lights and widening the ramps are much bigger projects, if you will. And even though the public commenter talked about those matters being somewhat redundant, they probably are because they are matters that have to be addressed by various organizations, not just the city, not just Caltrans. And if I can turn to our city manager to remind us of the opportunity to provide input on the studies that are going on, because I think it's fitting that those comments that were made about widening the on-ramps related to traffic could be included in some of those assessments. City Manager Marie?
Sure. I'm not, I don't know of the upcoming Caltrans meeting that the member of the public was referring to. The city staff does have regular communication with Caltrans about what we have heard are the primary concerns of our residents in relation to Caltrans, and those are congestion generally on I-80 and mobility challenges and transportation challenges in this part of the county, some of the backup on local roads related to that congestion and the metering system, in addition to the litter that seems to derive from the freeway and spill into the community. So coincidentally, city staff, some city staff members and I met with counterparts of Caltrans just last week to discuss those issues. We'll be further discussing some new initiatives that Caltrans has using some new state funding to assist cities in maintaining cleaner areas adjacent to freeways. We don't have a plan, and the metering lights issue does not tie into any upcoming study that the city is doing. We do have a number of ongoing traffic monitoring efforts. And so if members of the community are concerned about that issue of backup onto local roads adjacent to freeway on-ramps, please feel free. And with any of these other public comments, please feel free to email me, and I'm happy to follow up on those. I don't recall having heard about an issue with the overhead lighting in the freeway underpass on Pinole Valley Road. So if somebody can email me with specifics on that, I'd be perfectly happy to contact our Caltrans counterparts to have them follow up on that.
Thank you, City Manager Marie. I appreciate you clarifying what the current work is that's connected somehow or not with Caltrans. And of course, any one of us can bring up some of the public comments as matters for future agenda items later on our agenda. So I will close the public comment period, if I hadn't officially done so, and move on to the next item on our agenda. We do not have proclamations or presentations this evening. And we do have matters on consent calendar. So with consent calendar, there are several matters here listed. And I will turn to Deputy City Clerk to find out whether there are any members of the public wishing to comment on any of these.
Yes, thank you, mayor. We do have a public comment. Cordell Hindler? Mr. Hindler, are you able to unmute yourself? Mayor, there are no more other public comments. I'm not sure if we want to give Mr. Hindler a little bit more time.
Let's give Mr. Hindler about 15 seconds more to connect with us. Other than that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Perhaps he has a comment on something else for later today. So, Mr. Hindler, if you are there, you have 15 seconds to join us, either by phone or via Zoom, as you had earlier. Deputy City Clerk noticed that you had intended to make a public comment. Okay, so, Mr. Hindler has participated well previously, so I think perhaps maybe he just stepped away and will join us later. I will close the public comment period on consent calendar and will turn to council members to find out whether there are any items, questions that they may have for staff on any of these matters. Anyone? We don't see any virtual hands up. Am I missing someone? Please let me know. Okay, then. Seems like our staff reports on all of these matters were very clear to us all. And are there any questions from council members on any of the matters under consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion, please. Councilmember Murphy?
Madam mayor, I'm happy to make a motion to approve items 8A through 8D on the consent counter.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. Do I hear a second?
One second.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms. City Clerk Bell, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Toms?
Yes.
Murphy?
Aye.
Tave?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Rubin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on on our agenda, and we get to item 9A, which reads, "Presentation, presentations to..." Oh, plural, "Presentations to Mayor Martinez Rubin." Nice surprise. Okay, thank you. So I will, I'm here for your presentations.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to virtually present to Mayor Martinez Rubin, as is our tradition. A small gift as a token of the city's appreciation for her year of service as mayor. We provided the mayor with an engraved vase that reads, "Norma Martinez Rubin, in recognition of her leadership and services as mayor, City of Pinole, December 8th, 2020 through December 7th, 2021." And I know that I speak for all city staff in saying that it's been a pleasure working with you this year in your capacity as mayor, and we thank you dearly for your service.
And I thank you kindly for this very generous gift, which I am going to, it's translucent. So I'm not sure that the camera's going to capture that, but I appreciated the thought. And it occurred to me that it's quite symbolic of what I attempted to do during my mayorship. And that's, I have a base here. It's a crystal base. It's strong. There's also, one has to be cautious with it because it can break. And so what this represents to me is my attempt at trying to hold us all together as a council during the year of my mayorship. From December 2020 to current, December 2021, we all, together, lived another year in a pandemic. And I have to say that if there is any legacy to be said about Martinez, the Martinez Rubin mayorship, is that we made it through in spite of a pandemic, in spite of having to go through a number of different approaches to try to work together and cooperate and be collaborative and try to understand each other, given our different styles and our different approaches and our different ways of seeing the world. And in spite of entering into new areas of work with new staff, with a relatively new city manager, with ongoing identification of areas of need that we still need to address, with the encounter of new situations because of the pandemic that led us to advocate for a number of different things, including to support, along with our congressman, the interest in having some flexible funding to assist us with COVID recovery. And so in March, I had the privilege, as your mayor, City of Pinole, to live in a way that demonstrated that I was worthy of the trust that you placed on me when you elected me two years ago, or two, two and a half years ago. Boy, it's three years ago now, in 2018. And that, given the circumstances that we all lived, I recognized that, you know, in the work that we do as council members and in the role that I had as mayor, there were so many circumstances that were obviously beyond our control and that also contributed to what we were able or not able to do. And among those circumstances, again, was COVID, beginning of the pandemic, and being mayor in a year where our Congress allotted funding to local municipalities so that we can come up through, get through even further, hopefully, and in a healthy, both physically and physically way, so that we continue doing the work that we need to do to have Pinole be resilient and continue in its progress toward the completion of a number of different strategies that were identified in their five-year strategic plan. With planning in mind, I had to remind myself that a plan is a work in progress, and it has to be flexible, and we have to be flexible in it. Because of those circumstances that are beyond our control, because of encounters that we face well and also not so well, that there are opportunities, many, many opportunities, to learn from each other and with each other. And I hope that during the mayorship that I demonstrated some of those learnings as well. And I know that I made mistakes. I know that in my attempt at trying to work better or work most productively, that I may have, at the same time of trying to be efficient, might have neglected to think about how that efficiency might impact any one of us personally or individually and how we are made to feel when some of that efficiency probably overtakes a sense of needing to first connect with each other on a very personal, very human level, which is what the pandemic has asked of us to do. And so I have grown, both professionally and personally, during this mayorship. If anything I take away, it's that in that growth, I have become or been part of what in theory I was supposed to be prepared for. I have schooling in both public health and in business administration slash strategic management. You know, it's theory until you are tested, until what is tested. And in practice, we really show what we can or cannot do. Also recognizing that a lot of what is accomplished by a council is not of a mayor's doing entirely. It's working along with, along with the council members who are also attempting at learning their role. And in this year, we all, in a newly composed council, were attempting to do that, trying to identify how it is that we fit on a council, how it is that we fit with each other, how it is that we fit with those strategic plans or the planning that we have before us, a five-year document that we are still attempting to implement. And we attempt to implement that, realizing that it's not our work, really, day to day, but it's the staff's work that also helps us get through the role and the expectations that people have of us. And so I want to first start with thanking, well, gosh, I started a couple minutes ago, and I should have started this way, that in answer to the question when people have asked me, "How was it being a mayor?" That I can wholeheartedly tell you, that it's not a single word. I can't describe it in a single word. I can't even describe it in a single phrase. And grateful for the experience. I am appreciative of all of you, council members, as well as staff, for the talent that you bring, for the enthusiasm that you share, for the challenges that you pose, for the conflicts that we have gotten through. And I am thankful that we have all made it through in a relatively healthy way from one December to the next. I do not leave you with everything completed. Of course not. There's much, much more to be done. And I feel privileged to have worked alongside you and to have celebrated, as recently as a couple of weeks ago, or was it earlier this week, when we had the tree lighting. What I've come to know is during the mayorship, time flies. It's not always time flies when you're having fun. It's just time flies. And whether you have fun with it or not, whether I had fun with it or not, is really not the point. It was an experience and a privilege to serve. I started the mayorship letting everyone know that my interest was to be data-driven and to be as fair as possible. And I think we have attempted to do that and that we are learning more and increasingly using data to help support the identification of needs within the city, as well as the exclamation and proclamation of accomplishments that we have made, which is also very good for us to remind ourselves that it's not all of us, about any one of us individually. I take my greatest lessons from the kinds of leaders that are oriented to service, leadership, to service. And that allows me to make mistakes as I move along in a leadership role, as well as to adopt new approaches to how I work. And I will have those opportunities as I continue on the council next year and as I also continue to be of service through a larger organization, which is what fosters our growth as council people through CalCities. I will have the privilege of serving as the chair of the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee, which will be taking a look at how cities throughout California can further their goals and interests in doing the kinds of work that is necessary to address such matters as housing and emergency preparedness and the... Boy, a couple of other priorities that CalCities has put in place with the input of the policy committees, but that cannot be really implemented unless there is a legislative will statewide, as well as the necessary resources, financial resources, that local cities and small cities like Pinole require. And so, I'll try to do my best to represent us on that committee. And I will attempt as well to remain conscientious of the trust that voters placed on me when they elected me that in 2018. I also step away a little bit and onto perhaps a little bit more relaxed role as a regular council member in a couple of minutes, perhaps, knowing that there is more work to be done. And if anything, I have fostered and have left you all, fellow council members, with the notion that stability is necessary in our interactions with each other, as well as the interactions that we have with staff and interactions that we have with the public. Without that mutual respect, it doesn't matter how much we accomplish if we leave behind as well the sense among anyone that their dignity has not been respected, because we all deserve that to be so. And, well, also, I leave you with the mindset that there is continued learning and growth to be done and that every day is how it helps to have a sense of adventure. I want to thank my husband for his support. Jeff Rubin, you're out there. I thank you for your support in the form of your sense of humor. Every time I started a meeting, he always encouraged me to have fun and enjoy it. And I hope that I kind of spread that a little bit to us all. That sense of humor helps us in getting through the serious aspects of our job, as well as just enjoying the time that we have together. So, thank you, everyone, and I look forward to continuing to share along with you so many lessons yet to be learned and along with that, to actually do some work that takes us through a period of resiliency and continued growth in the City of Pinole to make it better. And also, to build upon what is already here, without neglecting the fact that only... It's not only because something is new that it's better, but there is something to be said about having roots and having a sense of being grounded in the history that a city has. And I would encourage you all to recognize that history is important, not only for it having been created by the people who came before us, but as well as we all make history together. So, looking forward to several days, hours, years, and our continued progress. Thank you, everyone. City manager, city attorney, assistant city manager, and all the department heads and staff that help support and implement our sometimes off-crazy, wild ideas, but as well those that make sense to us all, because we come to a point where we say, "Sure, let's give it a try. Let's try to make things better. Let's work with what we have. And let's also look for some new and different approaches that will help and expand upon that which we can create together." Thank you, everyone. Have a great rest of the evening.
I believe that my presentation of the vase is the presentation. And so, I think we're ready. Unless the city clerk believes otherwise, yes, for the next agenda item. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I think I'm still on as facilitating the meeting, so I'll take advantage of that until I turn it over with to City Clerk Bell. So, council reorganization, Item 9B, council comments to outgoing mayor. And I see...
Hi, Mayor. Your understanding? I just want to note to you that there are some public comments on deck. I think there may be space for that, too.
Thank you. So, if we can... We usually do turn to the public, so if I may have Deputy City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Yes, we do have Cordell Hindler.
Thank you.
We'll try him again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Rubin, council members. You have done an exceptionally wonderful job as mayor. And I've really got to learn a lot since I've attended your meetings in the past few months. And I'd say you have done a terrific job, after all the agony of all the long meetings that this council has been through regarding the budget and that type of thing. So, and every time I see you, I say, "Mayor Rubin from Pinole, attend the mayor's conference." I really enjoy it. And you bring such life to the council, I mean, with your wisdom. And you've always, like, you know, listened to the public. And you've also done, let's see, what else? You also hear from what the council members have to say, you know, like, on an agenda items or you hear from staff. I mean, you've got a kind heart and like, and you've done a terrific job, Mayor Rubin. You're still going to be the mayor regardless. So, and after all, after all the late-night meetings that y'all had, the council has been through during the pandemic, I'm like, whoa. I said to myself, this... I said, "The City of Pinole, they mean business." So, and I think you've done a terrific job. So, I send my comments for 9B, 9C, and that's it. And you're still going to be the mayor, hands down.
Rafael Menes?
So, I'd like to thank Mayor Martinez Rubin for her work as mayor over the past year. We've had moments, you know, where we disagreed, where I thought maybe she could have done something differently, but ultimately, she always worked hard to be fair, even-handed with all commenters and to allow for a thorough public process, while also making sure that, most of the time, the meetings included at a somewhat reasonable hour. I'd also like to particularly praise some actions that Mayor Martinez Rubin took. In particular, her advocacy for vaccination against COVID-19 over the past several months. It's important to have the mayor advocating for that, especially a mayor with a public health background, because it's important that, you know, everybody be vaccinated. And I'm glad that Mayor Martinez Rubin did that and helped push our community's vaccination rate up to close to 90% again. And also, for her work with the Creek Trash Monitoring Scientific Project along with Commissioner Moriarty and the rest of the Thriving Earth Exchange Group. I think it's important for the city to have a proper role in that. And I appreciate her taking the time, in addition to the many demands of her time as mayor to work on that project as well. So, thank you for your work as mayor, for your words and for your actions. And I hope you enjoy your time as a council member, free from at least the particular burdens of the mayorship.
Mayor, there are no more public comments?
Thank you for those. Okay, so now we turn to council members. If anyone, there was a virtual hand up from Councilmember Tom just a bit ago.
Yes, I'll be brief, but I wanted to thank you, Mayor Martinez Rubin, for all of your work. And you're representing the city as the liaison from the city in the eyes of so many other organizations in our community and beyond. You know, whether it's Mayor's Conference or up in Sacramento, or with League of California Cities and at WestCAT Board. Thank you. You know, each year, the city council and the mayor have some kind of challenges. And ours wasn't necessarily financial challenges this year, thankfully, but we've had some, you know, incredible other challenges, going virtual, starting to reopen as a community. And I want to thank you for your leadership and your guidance in going through that process.
Thank you. I forgot, you know, I'm sorry. I'm absorbing all these comments. So, thank you for your kindness, everyone. Councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem Salimi, please.
Madam Mayor, I would like to thank you for everything that we have done. You keep us together during this difficult time of the pandemic. And you have been extremely fair. And you have been... You're a kind-hearted person as well. Just as an example of your fairness, as soon as you were elected, you were the first council member who advocated towards the fire study. And I also would like to remind the entire council that Measure X money and the work that the county dedicated, the $2 million for the opening of the Fire Section 74, happened during your mayorship. So, this is another example of all kind and fair you were during your entire mayorship. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was a great pleasure to serve you as a vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Salimi. Councilmember Murphy?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just want to join my colleagues in congratulating you and thanking you for your service. Also, wanted to amplify your work on WestCAT Board. I know you served as chair. For those of you who don't know, WestCAT is one of the key ways many of us have gotten to Pinole for those who take part. So, I do acknowledge and honor that work that you've done. And thank you for amplifying the need around accessibility and affordability of that system. And I think your legacy, both in Pinole, but also with that board, will be such that we are going to keep fighting for a more accessible and affordable WestCAT system. So, just wanted to amplify that and thank you for your service again.
Thank you. I have to sit here, step in and say, "Thank you, fellow Bruin." Back in my student days, I drove transit. So, I speak about it from that perspective as well. So, yeah, more work.
I see some Bruins in the attendee section, too, who probably are really proud of you as well. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate?
So, I just wanted to say, Madam Mayor, thank you for your leadership. And, you know, we're a long way from Planning Commission, right? I mean, just thinking back to some of the projects that we had there and where we are now, the city has come a long way. And that's due to a lot of the leadership within this council, but your mayorship as well. And I just want to say thank you. Another item that was a big push for us was the census, which you had a large-handed that we wound up doing very well. And so, I just want to say thank you again. And, yeah, we'll look forward to another great year with this council.
I appreciate all... And the reminders, that's right. You know, let's all be counted. It's 2020, and it's aftermaths. We're still using that kind of data, and we will continue to for the next 10 years. So, lots of that for us to use and have a basis for in our work. All right, then. Thank you, everyone, for your kind comments. Are we all ready for the next item on our agenda? All right. So, now I will turn to our city clerk, Bell, and she will take us out to the next item. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to introduce the next item on the agenda, which is our annual reorganization of the council. I'm going to provide a brief staff report and then just highlight the recommendation for you. In a general law city without a directly elected mayor, such as Pinole, the city council may select one of its members to serve as mayor and another to serve as mayor pro tem. The Pinole City Council established a system for selecting the mayor and mayor pro tem in Resolution 2010-87, which you'll see as attachment B to the staff report. In short, the order of mayoral succession is determined based on the number of votes council members received when they were elected by residents. The specific order of succession is documented in a mayoral list that the city clerk, myself, and my office updates and the city council affirms following each city council election and city council vacancy that occurs. The current mayoral list was affirmed by the city council on December 8, 2020, and you can find it as attachment C to the staff report. The attached proposed resolution as attachment A appoints Councilmember Salimi as mayor for a one-year term and Councilmember Murphy as mayor pro tem for a one-year term, consistent with the procedures directed by Resolution Number 2010-87. If the council approves the resolution, Mayor Salimi and Mayor Pro Tem Murphy will be sworn in this evening. So, the recommendation is that the city council appoint the mayor and mayor pro tem per the rules of succession by resolution. And that concludes my report. And I'll pass it over to you, Mayor, for the council action.
Thank you. So, I will move that... Well, first of all, are there any public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor, of El Hindler.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Rubin, council members. After listening to the staff report, I kind of agree with what's being presented to you all. So, hopefully, you will proceed with that. So, don't make a motion and the rest of the procedure. So, that's it.
Any other public comments?
I'm just doing one last review.
Thank you.
Yes. Hadia?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes.
Hi. I just want to... Yeah, I wanted to chime in about earlier today about... I just wanted to bring up and put for record that individuals, one of the things that we talked about when someone said about Pearl Harbor, acknowledging those who fought for this, you know, fought for our country and the freedoms and rights that we have. And I wanted to bring up how that was brought up in terms of the elect pro... The mayor-elect and how standing for the... You know, for the... What is it, the flag? And standing for the, you know, speaking about... What is that called when you... When you... No. About the... When we say, when we speak about the flag or we speak of standing for the flag and all of those things. So, one thing that I think our country fought for, and I know from the backstory of Mr. Devin Murphy, is that he also has family on his paternal and maternal side who fought for this country and actually died in all services of... In all of the services. And so, you know... And so, you know, one of the things I know that many people fought for is our fight for freedom, to be able to make choices, to have rights to make choices. And so, I just want to put that for the record that, you know, one of the great things about our country is that we don't have to all follow one way, right? We can agree to disagree. And that's the great thing about our freedoms. And so, when the person who spoke earlier around that they want, you know, Mr. Murphy to consider that, I want that person to also consider that because of our rights, because we have those rights, we have a right to say if we want to or not. And it has nothing to do with disrespect, but also the right to say how you show up, how you show up and how you respect or acknowledge things the way you do it and not the way that, you know, society, one part of society may feel you should show up. So, I just want to put that on record. And again, I'm so happy to hear that Devin Murphy will be Mayor Pro Tem. And I look forward to a celebration for him. Thank you.
Cheryl Sadoof?
Before the next person comes on, I think if I am audible to you, I think I'll be audible to anyone else who may be on cue for public comment. The item before us, on which there is public comment now, is about the process that we're going through. The council, pardon me. I have just lost my place on this.
Mayor, this time we're doing the appointment of the mayor and mayor pro tem. That's the, and that's the recommendation in front of us.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So, that's what we, public comments about that. Thank you very much.
Okay, Cheryl Sadoof?
Sorry. Thank you very much. And two things I want to say. To the mayor, Mr. Martinez-Rubin, I want to say, great job this year. Enjoy hearing you, especially at the mayor's conferences. A fresh break of air. Always bring something. And for those of you who aren't able to listen to her speak at the mayor's conferences, she lifts you guys up. She does lift your city up every single time. She's very proud of Pinole. And so, she speaks very well at the conferences of you. So, thank you for what you do. And to all of the City Council members, hello, Marine, I want to say. I know this is a tough job. So, you've lived through a very hard time and you've done a great job with this city. To the new mayor, Mr. Salim, congratulations. And I'm looking forward to seeing your leadership here in West County. And to mi amigo, mi hermano, Mr. Murphy. I've been watching your leadership and so I'm very proud of you and I'm looking forward to seeing you continue to lead, especially in our environmental and our infrastructure and transportation space. It's not every day that we have an opportunity to make an impression on our neighboring cities. I don't even know, but every one of you I have encountered or have had the pleasure of working with in some way, because we are all here in West County. So, the work that you do, the work that we do, has an effect on one another. And all I can say is that we don't know what another person is going through from day to day. And the times that we are living in, all we can do is just be kind to people. Just be kind to people. Because we don't know what's going to happen from day to day. And you don't know if you will ever see that person again the next time or what they're doing. So, just be kind and try and make the world better in each and every action that you do and each action and interaction that you have with an individual. Make it one that they will have a positive impression on you when you walk away. I thank you for the work that you do and the work that you have done. Have a very good evening. Thank you so much.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period on item 9C. Now, I will turn to council for any questions on the report that City Clerk Bell presented or any comments. Councilmember Toms?
Yes, I'm ready to move the approval of the resolution appointing Vincent Salimi as mayor and Devin Murphy as mayor pro tem.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk Bell, roll call, please.
Councilmember Toms?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tave?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Salimi?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Now, I will continue with your assistance. And I think this is now, I will step back a little bit. City Clerk Bell, for the next item on the agenda, if you would please kindly introduce our guest, who will be administering the oaths to Mayor Pro Tem as mayor and Councilmember as mayor pro tem. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's always fun during our reorganization meeting when we have special guests to help us with issuing our Oaths of Office. So, I'm very happy to introduce one of those special guests that we have with us this evening, and that is Dinah Betton, who's our Contra Costa County District Attorney. And she will be administering the oath to our mayor pro tem, Devin Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And certainly my congratulations to outgoing mayor and this entire council. And my congratulations to the incoming team as well. And what an honor and a pleasure that I have tonight to be able to swear in the mayor pro tem, Devin Murphy. It's an honor for me as the first woman and the first black woman and the first person of color to serve as district attorney in Contra Costa County, first black woman to serve as Superior Court Judge, and first to be elected by my peers as presiding judge in the county as well. So, I am so thankful and grateful for this opportunity to be a part of Pinole's history as Devin T. Murphy is poised to make history as the youngest, the first openly LGBTQ and first black mayor pro tem in the history of Pinole. So, if you are ready, Mr. Murphy, will you please raise your right hand as I execute the oath that is required by the state of California's Constitution? I, Devin T. Murphy,
I, Devin T. Murphy,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support and defend,
that I will support and defend,
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies,
against all enemies,
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully discharge,
and that I will well and faithfully discharge,
the duties upon which I am about to enter,
the duties upon which I am about to enter.
You have been duly sworn. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Devin T. Murphy.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you again to our very special guest, Dinah Betton, District Attorney. We appreciate you being here with us this evening. And I think we're now ready to move on to the next Oath of Office for our new mayor. So, we can have the next slide broadcast team. Thank you. So, the next guest that I'll introduce is Attorney Paul Torres Sarkisian. And he will be assisting with the Oath of Office for Mayor Vincent Salimi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and good evening, councilmembers. It is my honor to administer the Oath of Office to the mayor pro tem Vincent Salimi in order for him to assume the office of Mayor Pinole. Pro tem Vincent Salimi, would you please raise your hand and repeat after me? Aye, Vincent Salimi.
Aye, Vincent Salimi.
Do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support and defend,
that I will support and defend,
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies,
against all enemies,
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and to the Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
or purpose of evasion,
and that I will,
and that I will,
well and faithfully,
well and faithfully,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
upon which I am about to enter,
upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Salimi. I wish you and the city of Pinole much extent success going forward. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Paul. It's a great honor. I would like to make a speech and I will let Mayor Pro Tem Devin Murphy express himself once I'm done, if I may. Good evening. I'm very honored to serve you as the mayor. I'm very grateful to be representing such a wonderful city. Tonight is also a special day. It is the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor attack. My thought goes to the veteran or troops and everyone who sacrificed their life and helped our country to become the shining beacon of freedom and liberty. Let's face it. My presence tonight in front of you as mayor was unpredictable. A person with my background was more declined to enter City Hall as a tourist than as a mayor. But yet that happened. This clearly shows to the county, to the state, to the country and to the rest of the world how open-minded the city of Pinole and its citizens are. The people of Pinole made the decision based on qualifications, quality and vision, and not based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, age or sexual identity. If anybody had doubts about our country's social advancement, well, tonight is your answer. An answer that made a double immigrant, born in Iran, who grew up in France, the mayor of an American city, the mayor of Pinole, your mayor. I was born in 1980 in Tehran during the war. I spent the first year of my life facing the uncertainty of dangers and of wars. I spent the four years of my life hoping for a better tomorrow, hoping to stay alive. I learned that life is precious. Life is a gift to make yourself and the world around you a better place. Set high goals. Don't be scared of failing. Failure is part of success. My family moved to France when I was four years old. This is where I stayed until high school and I became a French citizen. Then I moved to the United States, went to college. I met my wife Monica, who is from Pinole. I opened my company. We have two beautiful children, Lila and Dylan. Lila is turning five today. Happy birthday, Lila. And my son Dylan is two. My life has been a wonderful novel. I'm truly living the American dream, a dream that has been composed by all of you. In 2018, when I was elected, over 68% of the citizens have casted their votes, many of them for the first time, because they believe that this time must be different, that the voices could be different, could be that difference. Let me tell you, people, we heard you and change came. Since I've been elected in 2018, the council have helped towards that change. We worked with everyone. We united the city. No more division. Let me tell you, I will always listen to you, especially when we disagree. We also, we evaluated our budget and were able to make some major adjustments. We created a fund for business and for Pinole revitalization. We budgeted a full-time economic development person for the city. We also added additional resources to our public work department. We're working on offering a more competitive salary to our managers that will be aligned with the rest of the county and helped us to retain our talent in Pinole. We also increased the hours of the library. The revenue of the city did increase. The city has over $24 million in savings. We attracted new businesses in Pinole and sold the businesses downtown who remained empty for over 10 years. We increased funding for the police department and the fire department. And with the collaboration of the county and Measure X Committee, the fire department, the city staff and city council were able to secure $2 million to help the opening of Station 74. We, as a council, accomplished in three years what we had promised you three years ago. So, what is next? We are still in the midst of the pandemic. We need to stay safe. We need to work on our economic development. We need to work on opening a bank in Pinole. We need to develop downtown. We need to work on opening Station 74. We need to help every single group in Pinole to be successful. Their success is our success. We need to work towards becoming a charter city and having the discussion into what we can make charter city. The city of Pinole also reorganized its staff members by adding additional staff. We have funded, we have money available every year for the car show. And this year, we are also dedicated money for the Fourth of July fireworks every year. And I have no doubt that Pinole will have a successful future. It is just a matter of believing in yourself[1793.29] It is just a matter of believing in yourself and having the right mindset. I look forward to serving you as a mayor and meet all the city staff. I wanted to thank Mayor Pro Tem Devon Murphy. I'm very honored to work with you this year. You are the first African-American Mayor Pro Tem of the city, and it's a great honor to work with you. Councilmember Martinez, Nora Martinez, Ruben, thank you. Maureen Thompson and Anthony Tave. Councilmember Tave, I would not be sitting here tonight as a mayor without your help. Pinot is very happy to have you. Anthony, you're a great person, a great colleague, a great husband, son, father, and a great council member. Thank you. I also would like to thank our district attorney, Dinah Beckton, for supporting me during my election. I also would like to thank the former council members, Maria Legria, Debbie Long, Stephen Thilton, Pete Murray, Roy Surenchen, Tim Baneros and Mary Horton. Our staff, former city manager, Michelle Fitzer, our current city manager, Andrew Murray. Andrew, you worked very hard to improve Pinot, and tonight I would like to thank you for your work. Our city attorney, Eric Casher, very talented person with a great heart. Our fire chief, Juan Coop, chief gang. Our finance director, Marcus Aguilroy, our assistant city manager, Hector de la Rosa, and all the employees of the City of Pinot. And I would not be standing tonight in front of you without the support of my best friend for the last 18 years, the rock of our family, the love of my life, Monica Hicks. My kids, Lila and Dylan, I love you very much. And while he's no longer with us, I know that my father-in-law, Steve, is watching along with the rest of the family who passed away. I'm thinking about my grandparents, my uncle Charam and Assi. I miss them tonight. I also would like to thank my family who is in France, in the United States, and my grandmother who is sick today. To my sister, Yada, my mother Caroline, who came after two and a half years visiting us for the first time because she was stuck in France because of the COVID-19 restriction. To my father, Abby, to my sister-in-laws, Erica, Jessica, my mother-in-law, Lois, I'm very grateful to you. I also would like to thank my brothers, Paul Torres Sarkisian and George Vu. Yvette Rico, Jeff Ruben, David, Irma, Frankie, Lance, Tammy, Sue, Tony, who have been there with me since the beginning. Thank you. I also would like to thank Rafael Menes, the firefighters local 1230, Steve Dorsey, Vince Wells, Pinot Police Employees Association, the Central Labor Council of Contracostas County, the plumbers and steam filters local union 159, the California Democratic Party. I wouldn't be here without you tonight. The Democratic Party of Contracostas County, the Young Democrats local 512, Elsorito Mayor, Gabe Quinto, our county supervisors Glover, Joya, Burgess, Mitchoff and Anderson, Measure X Committee, Tamara Miller, the Pinot Historical Society, Congressman Thompson, who helped the City of Pinot in getting over $4 million towards the American Rescue Plan Act. But above all, I would never forget who I should be truly thankful to. I need to thank you, you, the people of Pinot. Thank you. I would like to turn towards Mayor Pro Tem Devon Murphy for his speech, please.
Absolutely, and thank you, Mayor Salimi, for those words. Mayor, council, city staff and members of the public, I am so honored this evening to have earned the trust to serve you as your incoming Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Pinot. The youngest, first black and first openly LGBTQ mayor pro tem in our city's over 100-year history. Over the past year, we've led this city through the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, acknowledging those who are most marginalized in our town, creating opportunities for small businesses and their growth, celebrating our outstanding diversity and cleaning up the wrongs of our past. I believe that Pinot will and can be a world-class city for all people who want to live here. Pinolians deserve the very best. Fulfilling our potential as a city will require our council to fulfill our potential as a body, as a strong, responsible, transparent and collaborative council. A council that upholds responsible participatory governance. A council as great as the people we serve. There is no going backwards for this council. There is only moving forward. I thank the numerous community members that made this possible, many that the mayor had just mentioned. The numerous community members who continue to reach out with hopes of working with us to build a better city, and the numerous community members of our community who want to take us to action in between council meetings to create a data-driven and centered, as well as a delivery-driven and centered, local government. It is because of you that last November, I received the most votes of any candidate in Pinot's history. And moreover, and most importantly, it is because of you that we will continue to build the vibrant, the inclusive and the resilient city that we all deserve. As Mayor Pro Tem, I will continue to serve Pinot residents with the utmost respect, with the utmost honor, and work every day to deliver the governance you all deserve. As human rights activists, anti-apartheid revolutionary and former president of South Africa, Nelson Mandela once said, "It is not our diversity which divides us. It is not our ethnicity, our religion or culture that divides us." Since we have achieved our freedom, there can only be one division amongst us, between those who cherish democracy and those who do not. Community, I say this to you with the utmost confidence. We are not small. We are not small. When I think about the future of Pinot, all I see is big lights ahead of us. One that is lit on the pillars of representative democracy, cultural diversity, and the courage to believe that our boldest imaginations are possible. Community, playing small does not serve us, our families or our children. We must and will open the doors and windows of City Hall to empower you, but we must and we will empower the public to be a partner in our decision-making. I look forward to working with the council, city staff, the public and Mayor Salimi to ensure that this city works for all people, including those most marginalized. And I thank you for the opportunity. And my hope, my dream and my will is to make you proud of our progress. Thank you so much, and I appreciate working here and I'm looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Murphy. What I would like to do, I would like to turn it to the council for any comments and then to the public before we go to new business, if you don't mind. Anybody, any member of the council would like to make any comments? Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, Ruben, thank you. Just go ahead.
Thank you. I'm having a little fun with us all. So one of my wishes to you all and to the newly sworn-in Mayor Salimi is to not have to use the gavel. So on our virtual Zoom meetings, I didn't have to do that, and I think we managed fairly okay. When it comes time, if and when we do meet in person, you will have an actual gavel. And I hope that you don't have to use it, because having to use it means that we have lost our sense of cooperation and collaboration amongst us and/or with the public. And I think both of you, you and Mayor Pro Tem Murphy, have expressed desires otherwise. So have fun, have a good time, stay healthy, both of you, and see you as we move along.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. I've got to get used to calling council member and not mayor anymore. Can I take you a little bit? I'll be getting used to. Councilmember Tave, please go ahead.
I just want to say congratulations to the both of you, and I look forward to working with you through this year. I think we got a lot of great things ahead of us, and I'm looking forward to working with the entire council to help keep moving Pinot forward. And, you know, I just hope that we do keep that atmosphere and energy that we've had over the last, you know, year or so, year or so, and just keep things moving good in a good way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tave. Councilmember Thompson.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to congratulate both of you on this momentous occasion. Just the recap of accomplishments that our mayor Salimi listed brings to the forefront the work that we have ahead of us. We are going to have a busy year coming up, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. I would like to turn towards the public and see if you have any public comments, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have Rafael Menes.
Greetings, Mayor Salimi and Mayor Pro Tem Murphy. I'd like to congratulate you both on your assumption of these offices. As you both have noted, you've come to this rank, both through the support of the people of Pinot and of various institutions within Pinot and Contracostas County, but also defined in many ways by your respective backgrounds and the experiences that you've gone through as an immigrant, as someone who survived war, as a student, as someone who started a company, as someone who's had to deal with discrimination, as an African-American, as an LGBT, huge person. I think it's important for us all to recognize the strengths that this diversity of perspective, of background, of experience bring to our city, especially in a leadership role, that it's not just the same perspectives from the past, but new perspectives informed by experiences that not many, or perhaps even almost any of us, have had, that can allow for broader-ranging discussions of a diverse array of perspectives and ideally, new ideas to help move us forward in the ambitious goals that we all share, both within our community to help deal with the major projects that have been going forward and will continue to go forward, and with defending our community against the threats that face it, within and without. As prior speakers have noted, this is the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, when America was threatened in its existence as a democratic and republican nation by attacks from without. Now, we also face threats to our continued existence as a democratic and republican nation, from without and from within. And I appreciate that both the mayor and the mayor pro tem took the oath to protect us against all enemies, foreign and domestic, who would seek to overturn our constitutions in the State of California or the United States as a whole. There are times when this is less urgent, but we do not live in those times. So I'd like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Murphy in particular for his comments on the importance of democracy and of centering our defense of democracy. Without a democratic system, we lack the legitimacy that allows our government in Pinot and more broadly to do all the things that we wish it to do. Thank you.
David or Irma Bruport?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, staff and public. Congratulations, Mayor Salimi, Mayor Pro Tem Devon Murphy. I campaigned, voted and supported both of you very proudly. This past year has been awesome for you and the council. Always remember the campaign and the people you met, and don't forget the ones you haven't met. Try to reach out to those we haven't reached to, and to make sure that when you make decisions and you vote on something, it's for all and not just a few. I totally respect you. I would do it again. And as usual, always remember those that have always supported you, because we'll be there for both of you and the whole council. So, thank you all very much. Have a good evening. And let's move forward, move the city forward and open Station 74. Thank you. Good evening.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next item, I would like to thank again our district attorney, Dinah Beckton, and Mr. Paul Torres Sarkisian for being here tonight with us. It was a great pleasure having you, and we hope to see you soon again. Good evening. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Item 9F, which is the review and discussion and appointment to the 2021 Council Committee assignment list. So I will open my notebook here. I would ask a question to Eric Casher here, if I may. Good evening, Eric. So the list of assignments has to be, this is a mayoral appointment, correct?
Mayoral appointment, correct.
Okay. I actually, yes, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. So I did have my list. I think the first item on my list is A-BAG. And I would like to continue with Councilmember Maureen Thompson and Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Devon Murphy. Let me go to my agenda here, just to make sure that I've got it correctly here. That's correct. The first one, that's correct. So I would like to appoint the delegate to be Councilmember Thompson and the alternate Mayor Pro Tem Devon Murphy. The next item, it's Marine Clean Energy. I would like to continue with Mayor Pro Tem Devon Murphy as delegates, and I continue with the alternate as Councilmember Thompson. Item number three, which is the Pinot Hercules Water Treatment Subcommittee. At this moment, we have Delegate Salimi Tave, and as an alternate, we have Councilmember Thompson. I would like to step down from that committee as I'm assuming more responsibilities. And I would like to delegate Councilmember Thompson, but I would like to ask if anybody else would like to help Councilmember, I'm sorry. I would like to delegate Councilmember Tave, but I'm asking if anybody is volunteer to helping Councilmember Tave on the Pinot Hercules wastewater subcommittee here.
I would be interested.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. So we would have Councilmember Anthony Tave and Councilmember Thompson. And I believe we need an alternate here. I would ask either Councilmember Martinez Ruben or Mayor Pro Tem Murphy, if they would like to be alternate here. I would ask either Councilmember Martinez Ruben or Council, or Mayor Protem Murphy, if they would like to be alternate here.
I'm happy to step in if Councilmember Martinez Ruben doesn't want to be the alternate there.
Thank you. So we will appoint Councilmember Thoms and Tave as delegates and as an alternate, Mayor Protem Devon Murphy. Next item on the list, item number four, which is Recycle More. At this moment, I would like to continue with Mayor Protem Devon Murphy and Councilmember Anthony Tave. And I believe Councilmember Tave will be the delegate, delegate, and the alternate would be Mayor Protem Murphy. Item number five, which is WECTAC. I will turn towards Councilmember Martinez Ruben. Councilmember Martinez Ruben, I know that you have been representing us on the WestCAT. And as I am the representative of the West Contra Costa Transportation Advisory Committee, I would like to step down and give an opportunity to probably you, Councilmember Martinez Ruben, who is already representing us in a different transportation agency, to probably represent the city of Pinot on both transportation agencies, if that's something you'll be interested in.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. So Councilmember Martinez Ruben will be the delegate for the city of Pinot for WECTAC, and I would like to continue with Council, Mayor Protem Devon Murphy as an alternate. Thank you. Item number six, which is the WestCAT. At this moment, we have delegates Martinez Ruben and Thoms. I would like to continue with the same delegate, if it's fine with you. And as an alternate, I would like to ask Councilmember Murphy, Mayor Protem Murphy, would you like to continue as an alternate, please?
That's fine, Mayor.
That's fine. Thank you, Council, Mayor Protem Murphy. So delegates will be Martinez Ruben, Thoms and alternate Murphy. Next item on the list is the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference. And I believe this is dedicated towards the mayor and the mayor Protem, so the mayor will be me, and the mayor Protem will be Council, Mayor Protem Murphy. Next item on the list, item eight, the East Bay Division League of California Cities. That usually goes to the mayor and the mayor Protem, so this has been taken care of. Next item on the list would be the West Contract, sorry, correction, West County Mayors and Supervisors Association, which goes to the mayor and Mayor Protem. I think this has been taken care of. Next item on the list, which will be the Subcommittee of the City of the Pinot City Council. The Finance Subcommittee is usually composed of the mayor, the mayor Protem and the city treasurer, which has been taken care of right now. Next item on the list, item number 11. I believe it's honoring, naming ADAC Subcommittee. At this moment, I have Councilmember Thoms and Mayor Protem Murphy on the, on the committee. Is this something that you would like to continue, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, both of you. Item number 12, Municipal ADAC Subcommittee. At this moment, we have Councilmember Thoms and Tave. I do, I just want to, I know that Councilmember Martinez Ruben had more appointments last year due to the fact that she has been, she was mayor, and I do remember that two years ago, she was also in the Municipal Code ADAC Subcommittee, so she's used to it, if my memory recalls correctly. So I would ask between both, three of you, Councilmember Tave, Thoms and Martinez Ruben, if are all three of you interested in becoming part of that Subcommittee?
I am interested, yes.
Interested as well?
I am interested as well.
Perfect. So I'll, go ahead. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I think maybe City Attorney Casser, it's for an ad hoc Subcommittee, there ought to be two.
That's correct. I'm offering both, the three of you who wants to be part of it. So I would have, Councilmember Tave, would you like to be a part of it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I will make Councilmember Tave and and Councilmember Martinez Ruben as part of the Subcommittee here. And the reason why I'm removing Councilmember Thoms is because I would like to give more, a few Subcommittee to Councilmember Martinez Ruben, who used to serve to more committee last year to do, in fact, that she's stepping down as former mayor, if it's fine with you, Councilmember Thoms.
Well, I do want to state that I am still interested, given my background in implementing municipal codes.
That is correct.
Throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. So in this case, I would ask kindly to one of the three to agree on who wants to represent the city of Pinot on that Subcommittee. I would ask to one of you to step down.
Well, I have not jumped on just yet, so I will step aside so Councilmember Thoms can, can be part of that along with Councilmember, Councilmember Tave. Thank you. And thank you for, thank you for considering me, you know, items come back to the council, so I will add my two cents when those discussions are over by the Subcommittee. So thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Thoms, for stepping up and studying your experience. And so the, I think this would be Councilmember Thoms and Murphy. I'm sorry, Thoms and Tave, correction. Item number 12, Municipal Code ADAC Committee would be Thoms and Tave. Item number 13, the Planning Commission Interview ADAC Committee. At this moment, I would put Councilmember Thoms and Martinez Ruben.
Sure.
Mayor Protem, I'm Murphy. I'm just trying to put some on, some committee for Councilmember Martinez Ruben. So nothing personal by removing you here out of that Subcommittee.
No worries. If Councilmember Martinez Ruben, are you interested? I think you were just making up, like to say, you make a note if you were. I didn't hear you. My internet may be off.
Sure, I can be part of this ad hoc Subcommittee.
Perfect. So I think that concludes the list of Subcommittee that we have. If I may ask the city clerk to just repeat what we have here.
Mayor Protem, excuse me, Mayor Salimi, I think you missed a number of them, including the four.
Yes. So thank you. I was just going to call out that I think you were working from the 2021 list that was attached. There's another attachment that has the additions from this past year.
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, city clerk. So here it is. So we have number 15 here, the TAPS and Community Services Commission Interview ADAC Subcommittee. At this moment, we have Councilmember Tave and Murphy. Would you like to continue?
Sure.
Yeah, perfect. Anybody else is interested here? I don't hear any, so we will continue with Councilmember Tave and Murphy. Number 16, Participant Information Process of East Bay Wildfire Prevention and Vegetation Management Joint Power Authority. At this moment, we have Councilmember Thoms and Murphy, and I believe we haven't had a meetings on those ones yet.
We have.
You had?
Yes.
Okay. So I would like, this is a relative new committee, so I would like you to continue with that. Thompson, Murphy, please, if it's fine with you.
Yes.
Perfect. Number 17, Historic Preservation Overlay Old Town Design Guideline Review, ADAC Subcommittee with Design Review Board. And I believe we have Councilmember Martinez Ruben and Thoms. Would you like both to continue this?
Sure. Yes, we're almost done. I thought, I thought we were. So, yes, okay. We'll wrap it up.
Excellent. Thank you. And the last item here on my list is the Technology and Communications Subcommittee that we just created a few months ago, and we appointed Councilmember Murphy and Mayor Protem Murphy and Councilmember Tave to be part of it. So at this moment, I would like you to both continue, if it's fine with you.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. I have my list here. It's complete. Thank you for reminding me. City Clerk Bell, would you mind, please, repeating those names on the Subcommittee just to make sure that we have them listed correctly?
Yes, I'm happy to. If you'd like, I can just read the ones that have changes, since many of them stay the same.
I would ask you to, if you don't mind, go to that list and repeat them, just for the clarity is easier for me to follow up, please.
No problem. So number one, Association of Area Governments, that we made the same for the delegate being Thoms and alternate being Murphy. For number two, MCE Delegate Murphy, Alternate Thoms. Number three, the Pinot Hercules Waste Water Subcommittee, the delegates are Tave and Thoms, the alternate is Murphy. For number four, we have Recycle More Delegate Tave, Alternate Murphy. Number five, WECTAC, we have Delegate Martinez Ruben, Alternate Murphy. Number six is WestCAT, and we have Delegate Martinez Ruben and Thoms, Alternate Murphy. Number seven, we skipped because we were working off the different list, so that's the Bayfront Chamber of Commerce. Currently listed is Thoms.
I would like to continue with Councilmember Thoms, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number eight is the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference. That remain, that has the mayor and mayor Protem as our delegates, so Salimi and Murphy. And then we have the East Bay Division League of California Cities, which is also the mayor and mayor Protem, Salimi and Murphy. And similarly, for the West County Mayors and Supervisors Association, that's also going to be the mayor Salimi and mayor Protem Murphy. For subcommittees of the council, we have the Finance Subcommittee, which is always the mayor, the mayor Protem and city treasurer. Number 12, which is now going to be named the Committee on Memorials, is Thoms and Murphy. And then for number 13, Municipal Code Ad Hoc Subcommittee, we have Thoms, Tave. Yes, we settled on Thoms and Tave.
Excellent. Thank you. So I will turn toward public comments. We have any public comments there, please?
We have the remainder of the list. It looks like there's still one, two, three, four, five more, but these are the new committees that were added, so I can continue.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Number 14, the Planning Commission Interview Ad Hoc Subcommittee is Thoms and Martinez Ruben. Number 15, TAPS and Community Services Commission Interview Ad Hoc Subcommittee is Tave and Murphy. Number 16, Participants Information Process of East Bay Wildfire Prevention and Vegetation Management Joint Powers Authority, Thoms, Murphy. Seventeen is Historic Preservation Overlay Old Town Design Guideline Review Ad Hoc Subcommittee. That is Martinez Ruben and Thoms. And the last one is the Technology and Communications Subcommittee, and that will be Murphy and Tave.
Thank you, city clerk Bell. Do we have any public comments?
No, Mayor, there are no.
Thank you. No problem. I heard no public comments. So at this moment, I would like somebody to make a motion, please.
Sure, Mayor. The way that we typically do this list is that we have it be a two-part process. We'll bring forward the list with all of the revisions, so that it's published in the next agenda packet, and then the council can make one motion to approve the list.
Okay, so let it be like that. It's fine. We can leave it like that. We take a look and vote on it at the next council meeting. Thank you, city clerk.
Thank you.
So if you don't have any comments on item 9F, I would like to close that item and move on to item 10, Public Earrings. We don't have any public earrings at this moment, so I close public earrings, and I'd like to move to item 11, All Business. We do not have any All Business. Let's close item 11, open item 12, New Business None for the day. Close item 12, open item 13, Reports and Communication, 13A, Mayor Report and Announcements. I, as I said, I'm extremely happy and honored to become your new mayor, and I attended the Christmas event last Saturday with the rest of the council. It was a wonderful event, and I wanted to thank the entire city and the city staff who participated in that event. Very successful. My family loved it. My mother came here after two and a half years. I have not seen her. So we spent some time as a family over there, my dad, and it was great. And I also would like to thank Sequoia Real Estate who participated in the tree and everybody else who participated. I may forget some, some names, and I do address in advance. That concludes item 12A, Mayor Reports, and number 12B, Mayor mayoral and council appointments. I do not have any at this moment. Let's close 12B, open 12C, City Council Committee Report and Communication. I will start with new mayor Protem Devon Murphy. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to make sure for folks following that we're on 13C, I believe. I wanted to just quickly give a report, also very thankful to serve and looking forward to this next year together. Wanted to first and foremost thank city staff, including our recreation director, Maria Picasso, but all of the community partners, including, well, first of all, our city staff, including our police department and fire department, all of our community partners, including the Rotary Club, the Interact Club, Sequoia Real Estate, our small business community along Stan Pablo Avenue. The holiday tree lighting was absolutely fantastic and such a joy to be around and outdoors at that same time. And I just wanted to honor the work that, I know there was so much coordination and syncing in that work, and it was just such a good, good moment for our community. And I'm just so thankful for all of the staff who put so much time and effort into that, as well as all the donors and sponsors of the event as well. So just wanted to say thank you, and I'm so looking forward to this new year together. I am very much, and just wanted to note this, very much looking forward to starting our communications and technology Subcommittee as well, as we are looking to do some exciting new things, both for our council and hopefully for our city in this new year. And those who are interested in this type of work, I would encourage you to send me an email and let me know how the city, how you feel like the city can better communicate with you. Right now, we are going through a strategic planning process and communications process with Sorel Associates, as many have, many have been following, and that's a great way to add your input. So if you do have any input, please, again, email me. But also, please direct any comments to our long-term process that we have moving forward. We are going to be having Subcommittee meetings, and this is a great time for us to bring all of what we know, all of what we think we know, back to our council and make some decisions on how we best can communicate to the public. So just wanted to amplify that. But that's all for tonight, and again, thank you so much to this council, to the public, to city staff for all you've done. It's been an incredible year, and a first year for me as a council member and now mayor Protem, so I'm looking forward to next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Martinez Ruben.
Thank you, Mayor Salimi. Okay, so I saw all of you, I believe I saw all of you at the holiday tree lighting, and I want to apologize for not having acknowledged you when I was surrounded by a crowd, one of the bigger crowds that we have while at the tree lighting. All the lights in the crowd were frankly both, both great to see that people were out there celebrating. At the same time, it was a bit overwhelming. So my apologies for not recognizing that you were all alongside, alongside me there at that event. And just to round out the acknowledgements and the thank yous that have already been expressed, and as an example of how thorough our staff members are, here is the list of people who helped support the event. Sequoia Real Estate, who sponsored the tree, 22 footer. Children's activities were sponsored by Mechanics Bank, the cookie decorating by Bayfront Chamber of Commerce. The Pinot Schools and PTA groups decorated the additional trees that were alongside the taller tree. Volunteers were the Pinot Valley High School's Interact Club, as previously mentioned, and the Rotary Club as well. And there are city departments that were involved this year, the Community Services Department, of course, Recreation and PCTV, our Public Works Department, our Police Department, our Planning Department and our Fire Department. So thank you for helping us enjoy the event and also. And also, in seeing that crowd, I want to reiterate, I think it's worth, even though it may be tiresome to hear it again and again in news, is that being in a pandemic, part of the sense of being overwhelmed was that I noticed, along with the excitement that people had to be outdoors at an event, there was, you know, the crowd. And as an airborne virus with potential, yet more potential to mutate, we want to continue to be about our neighbors and friends and relatives. So if you would, please mask up, continue doing so, and allow for physical distancing as possible, as well as to help us increase the community immunity here in Pinot and in Contra Costa County, the vaccination to the extent possible. So other announcements that I may have, yes, prior to that celebration, there was a mayor's conference that I attended as their representative at that point. And there was a presentation by the Northern California College Promise Coalition, which is composed of a number of different organizations interested in providing, in my words, a pipeline of preparation for students from elementary schools through high school and college to augment the likelihood that they will, one, enter colleges, as well as successfully make it through to graduation. And there was an invitation for cities to be part of that coalition. I think perhaps we might be interested in helping support that, but it does merit a discussion because we heard in that presentation to the mayors that the initial effort to create this coalition, it stemmed from the work from the City of Richmond, which at the time that they were considering refinery improvements, improvements to the Chevron refinery, there was an opportunity to create a public benefit program through environmental and community investment. And so the City of Richmond was able to acquire $35 million over 10 years to help foster this pipeline of preparation into college. Those $35 million probably go a long way, but at the same time, the coalition members are encouraging cities to become part of the coalition. And so before even considering that, I think we need to hear more about what that entails, as well as what it would provide. Having heard it at the mayor's conference, one thing that I think together we ought to as well. And also, as part of that meeting, there was mentioned, there was a presentation, a brief presentation by DA Beckton, who spoke to what her office has done since the occurrences that were the, I'm going to, I'm going to not say this correctly, because I still need Chief Gang's guidance here on robbery, theft, and burglary. And all that combined, the retail events that occurred where there was a mob sort of occurrence that where property was taken from businesses in some of our neighboring cities. Her office recognized that there needs to be some, and City Attorney Cacher, you feel free to correct me, but some higher level or more serious prosecution that the situation warranted not only prosecuting on misdemeanors but on felonies. And as part of the presentation during the mayor's conference, the mayors in Pleasant Hill, Martinez, and Walnut Creek, so more toward the center of Contra Costa, got together to try to encourage the, an organized effort on the part of cities, along with district attorneys in Diana Beckton's office as well, along with her peers, to try to do something that would help identify how best to attend to these situations. And although the, those criminal acts occurred in cities larger than ours, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude the possibility that we could also be affected even in a city with a smaller population. And businesses that may not have the name recognition or the valued items that people might want to break into and steal, but it does warrant attention on our part, so we might be interested in more about that later as we proceed in discussions. And I believe the DA is going to be part of our agenda at some future meeting, so we can ask her more about progress since these events. I think that's pretty much all that I want to report about. The WestCAT, I don't believe we met. And we're going to be very briefly meeting later this week, more specifically about continuing to recognize that we are in a pandemic, and we will probably be meeting via Zoom at least for another month through the year. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez Ruben, for your great work representing us this last year again. Councilmember Toms, please, go ahead.
Here, thank you. I was not in attendance at the last meeting as I was traveling. I attended a conference that I had booked back in 2019, and I finally was able to attend it. So I missed all of the celebration regarding Measure X funding of Station 74. So I wanted to again congratulate the City of Pinot, you know, for being able to advocate for that funding. And I look forward to seeing, you know, what kind of agreement we can come up with with the county to implement reopening Station 74. Last week, I attended the League of Cal Cities Presentation on the Bay Adapt Regional Strategy for the Rising Bay. It's a discussion from BCDC, the Bay Conservation and Development Commission, studies on rising tides and how that's going to impact a lot of the coastal communities within the Bay Area. And I will have an item that I'll request on that relation, you know, on that topic for future agenda items. And then I also attended the first East Bay Wildfire Prevention JPA Formation Meeting. And we're still having the discussions on, is this the best vehicle for us moving forward? So we are going to meet again, and we're going to, we're hoping to have a guest attend our meeting, and that's the Executive Director of the Marin Wildlife Prevention JPA, who incidentally spoke and did a presentation at our League of California Cities Conference back in September. So with that, I also wanted to indicate my thanks to city staff and community organizations for coming out and supporting the tree lighting festivities on Saturday. It was very well attended. And it is just really nice to be able to celebrate coming together as a community safely outside. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms. Councilmember Tave, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Salimi. Yeah, I just wanted to extend my thanks. One thing of note, you know, when I was out there at the tree lighting event, it was amazing to see all the parents, how happy they were, how happy the children were. And just, you know, faces lit up along with the tree. I mean, it was really a great event. It had some face painting. It was awesome. But it also, you know, speaks to, you know, all the behind-the-scenes work that everybody in the community did, the business, business community, our residents coming out, the city staff performing at a high level. I just want to say that not only is that there's a synergy created there when everybody's working in concert, when the council, city staff, our businesses, and the community are working together. It's real clear that we can have successful events and a great time, and, you know, the car show, all these other events that have been happening. And so I just expect big things from our staff and from our community when those relationships are made strong and are nurtured. And I just want to say thank you to everybody because I think this year is going to be great, and I'm looking forward to all the events coming up. We do have a lot of work, but, you know, I'm very happy to be working with everybody up here, and I look forward to the success that's coming. I'm really excited about it. I do have WIC-MON Thursday, 6:30. If you're interested in attending, you can hit Recycle More's website, or you can shoot me an email. I can get you the link. But yeah, we've got some topics there. They're going to be going over El Cerrito's Hazardous Material Collection, which is one topic that should be pretty interesting since El Cerrito does their own hazardous waste collection, which is an interesting topic if you're into waste management, trash. Yeah, so a lot of big things coming. And if I don't see everybody, happy holidays. I think we have one more on December 16th. And but just in case for the public, you know, thank you for coming out to the event. We look forward to having you again. And it's an exciting time for us. So thanks again.
Thank you, Councilmember Tave. I think our next meeting is the 21st.
Sorry about that, 21st.
No problem. That concludes item 13C. Then I will move on to item 13D, which is Council Requests for Future Agenda Item. I will start with Councilmember Toms, please.
Yes, I'd like to have our support and adopt a resolution supporting the Bay Adapt Regional Strategy for the Rising Bay. We have a resolution that's been suggested to us, and it's something that, you know, the entire Bay, Bay Area communities really need to get on board with adapting to rising tides. So I'd like to have that on a future agenda item, agenda.
Is there a council here? Everybody?
Support that, yes.
So me too. So yes, that will be added. It can be noted by the city staff to add that to the agenda, please. Do you have any other item, Councilmember Toms, please? None? Okay, thank you. So let me turn on towards Councilmember Tave, please.
No, no future requests.
Thank you, Councilmember Tave. Mayor Pro Tem, Murphy.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to request two future agenda items. The first is a group named the Green Belt Alliance launched today, The Resilience Book, and it talks about how local cities can basically take action both against, you know, against the rise of the sea levels, but also just to the more resilient communities. I think it would be a great presentation for our council and our city to hear at a future council meeting. I'm open to the date. It just launched today, so I don't want to give a date to it, but that would be a great idea.
That's a great idea. I'm in favor of that. Anybody else in favor? Yes, I see one. Okay, two of us, that's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the other item I wanted to mention is, I do want to revisit some of our council procedures. I think perhaps we can explore some changes maybe to our council format, just to see if we're all in favor of it. I have a few ideas, but I don't, I feel like we should have the discussion first.
Well, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Murphy. That, I asked a question to staff, and this is something that will be brought up at our next council meeting on the 21st. This will be addressed on the 21st. Mayor Pro Tem, Murphy, would have the opportunity to reorganize the agenda.
So if I may just add a little additional info, every single year, after the council reorganization, the council considers the city council meeting procedures. So every single year in December. And this December, like the others, the city clerk will be bringing forward the council procedures. If city staff have any suggestions for how to modify the procedures, we'll include those recommendations. It's also an opportunity for a council to review them and make any changes it would like. So that has already been scheduled for the next council meeting.
Thank you, City Manager Murray. Mayor Pro Tem, Murphy, I guess this item will be addressed on the 24th of December.
I'm so sorry. I disconnected. What I heard was that the next meeting, the item will be coming to us.
That is correct, yes.
I'm so sorry about that. And then my last point is, this doesn't have to be a future agenda item. I was just going to ask if we can get a report around the progress of the Park Master Plan I know we're in works for.
Yes, I will, if you just report, I believe that the city can report back to the city council. I'm in favor of that. Anybody else? I just need one more person here. Yes, Councilmember Tave is in favor as well, Toms as well. Thank you.
That's all for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Martinez Ruben, please go ahead, please.
Thank you. So I'd like us to consider having staff, let us know the feasibility of augmenting our general plan to include a, well, health element. It's not one of the core elements just yet. It's an option, I believe, in cities to have such an element that identify each item mine is, things of policies specific to existing health status in the city, and also how it can be augmented. So agenda item to consider a health element as part of the general plan.
I am in favor of this. Anybody else? Councilmember Tave, she actually said yes.
For discussion purposes, yeah.
Yes. So this item will be added to the agenda. Anything else, Councilmember Martinez Ruben, please?
Thank you. I think that's a pretty big one, so.
Okay, perfect. So we will have four items for tonight. The Bay Adapt, Councilmember Toms would have, Councilmember Murphy with the group Green Belt Alliance. And the next meeting on the 21st will be discussing about the council procedures, and it would have a report about the Park Master Plan, and Martinez, Councilmember Martinez Ruben, ask about adding the health element into the master plan. Correct? So those are the items in the agenda. Anything else? None? I don't have any new item on the agenda, so that will close this section of the agenda, and I will move to the next item in the agenda, which is item 13E, City Manager Report and Staff Department Report, please. Mr. Andre, Andre Murray, please go, Murray, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you all. Congratulations again to Mayor Salimi and Mayor Pro Tem, Devin Murphy, and thanks to outgoing Mayor Martinez Ruben for your service. I'm sure I speak on behalf of all staff in saying that we're really looking forward to working with the full council in the year ahead. There are two city projects underway that we're seeking public input on right now. As I've mentioned before, we're undertaking a local road safety plan, the purpose of which is to identify what we consider to be issue or problematic areas in our transportation network and identify interventions to resolve issues in those key areas. So we have a project website that you can find by navigating to the city's website, where you can provide input on what you consider to be problematic areas in the transportation network. We'll also, in the early next year, be having a community meeting to discuss that. As you also know, we're undertaking a project to rebuild the San Pablo Avenue Bridge that crosses from Pinot into Hercules. We've hired some consultants to work on preliminary design. There's going to be a workshop tomorrow evening via Zoom. You can find information on the city website about that that's going to present some of the, the two tentative designs that are continuing to be explored. No decisions are going to be made at this point. The consultants are still doing additional analysis, but it is an appropriate time to get community input on the two options that are under consideration. So I invite anybody who's interested to attend that. That will be reported, and the video recording of that will be available on the city's website for anybody who doesn't get to participate tomorrow night but wants to review that discussion at some later point. Do you want to, I've offered my thanks and congratulations to the city staff, but I want to echo the sentiments of the council regarding the holiday event. I saw many of you there. I brought my kids with me. It was a wonderland to them, so many great events, great to see all the community partners. And just so exciting, as you mentioned, to see. And just so exciting, as you mentioned, to see the incredible diversity of the participants and just the energy and electricity of the event. So I think the challenge for us city staff is going to be trying to find enough events to have regular touchpoints throughout the year to kind of maintain that energy. The City Council has asked city staff to provide the Council with information on a number of items over the course of the year. And when we instituted this process of providing Council with information on specific topics, we committed to reporting out when we provided this info to the Council. So we have a list of a number of items that we, informational items and memos that we owe to the Council. I'm hoping to get those all done by the end of this calendar year. Recently, we provided Council with memorandums on the following. The zoning of 2151 Apian Way, which is the former doctor's hospital site. Information on our streetlight network, the ownership thereof and the maintenance thereof. Information on a particular site along Tenant Avenue that is a potential future park or solar site. And finally, a list of annual recurring Council Agenda items. So just wanted to follow through on that commitment to report on those items and expect that we'll be sending many more to the Council over the coming weeks. That is it for my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Murray. I will turn on to, I will close item 13E, and I will move on to item 13F, which is City Attorney Report. Mr. Eric Casher, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, wanted to offer my thanks and appreciation and congratulations to our outgoing Mayor Martinez Ruben. It was wonderful working with you over the past year in that role. And heartfelt congratulations to our incoming Mayor Salimi and Mayor Pro Tem, Murphy. Look forward to working with both of you all in the full Council. You guys did a great job, just the list of accomplishments from last year. It's something to be proud of, and you guys make me proud to be the city attorney. So that concludes my report.
This work wouldn't be possible without your help, Mr. Casher. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next item, item number 14, Adjournment. Before we adjourn, I just want to have a moment of silence for the victim of Pearl Harbor since we are celebrating the 80th anniversary. So it will probably take a few seconds for us to remember that terrible attack on the United States of America. Thank you all. I would like to adjourn to the regular City Council meeting of December 21st, 2021 in remembrance of Amber Schwartz. Thank you very much, and see you next in two weeks. Good evening.